All right. Good evening, everyone. I call this April 8, 2025 Hybrid Administrative Meeting of the Board Commissioners to Order. All Commissioners are present in person this evening. We will have a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Barboah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Chair. Madam COO, are there any changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have two changes for this evening's agenda. The first is Item 3A Economic Development Amendment to extend the IRB Notice of Intent for Salmo District Economic Development Projects be added to the agenda under Item 7A under adoption of resolution, followed by 8D Housing 2025-2026 Burneo County Housing Department Annual Plan be moved from Introduction of Resolutions to Item 7B under adoption of resolution. A vote is required for the above changes to the agenda, and staff for the request suspension of the rules to allow for the above items to be presented and considered for final adoption this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much, COO Baca. Commissioners, any questions on these changes that will require a rule suspension?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion. I'm sorry. Any other additions to the agendas tonight, Commissioners? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of the rule suspension and addition of the items? Oh, wait. I'm sorry. There was no second. Do you want a second? All right. Thank you, Commissioner Frank Baca. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signal an affirmative. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a five-zero vote, so that does suspend the rules for those items. All right. We will now hear public comment. Each person has two minutes, and you will be alerted to your remaining time. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium. If you are speaking in person, please, before making your statements, please state your name for the record in order to maintain decorum and order in the chambers and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone present. Speakers must adhere to the two-minute timeline. If the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, they may be subject to removal. Sayanti, could you please call the names?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. We have fifteen speakers today. I will start with the in-person. I will call three persons at a time. Don Schrader, followed by Anamitaas, followed by Samantha Ashbe. I will request when I will announce your name, please make your path towards the podium and make a line. Thank you.
Don Schrader, I compliment thousands here and hundreds of thousands across the United States who publicly protested on April 5th the love-starved, power-drunk, white racist liar-in-chief Trump and his money-mad gang of billionaires. I compliment Black U.S. Senator Cory Booker as a hero conscience for his 25-hour speech before the U.S. Senate, the longest speech ever in U.S. Senate history. Booker warned of the severe danger now to U.S. democracy from Trump and his gang. I compliment Mayor Tim Keller for passionately defending Albuquerque as a sanctuary city for our undocumented immigrant sisters and brothers. No city employee is allowed to ask anyone if he or she is undocumented. I compliment longtime activist Dolores Huerta. She stands strong for farm workers. She stands strong for undocumented immigrants. She stands strong for gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender people. She stands strong for women who choose abortion and for women's full equality. Dolores says there is one race, the human race. Dolores says we all have ancestors from Africa, so we all are Africans with different shades of color. Dolores urges us to boycott all companies that support Trump's evils.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader.
Anamitaas, followed by Samantha Ashbe. I will request once I announce your name, please make your path towards the podium. Anamitaas, followed by Samantha Ashbe. Kylie Schrader.
I'm Samantha. Should I go first?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Ashbe, and I am a Crossroads Counselor with Albuquerque Public Schools, speaking on behalf of the Crossroads Program. I'm going to read a letter that was written by a teacher at Sandia High School where I work. "To whom it may concern, I am writing today in support of additional funding for the Crossroads and school-based behavioral therapy programs in local schools. As a teacher, I am personally familiar with a number of instances where students in crisis benefited greatly from the Crossroads Program. When a young person struggles with emotional health or substance abuse issues, classroom teachers who see them daily are often the first to become aware of potential issues. I have on numerous occasions referred students to Crossroads Counselors where they received critical intervention and ongoing support that resulted in positive outcomes for the student. High school students are faced with myriad challenges that stem from their home environments and societal issues. They bring those issues to school with them every day, posing impediments to their social-emotional learning and academics. While educators cannot change those circumstances, it is important that we have tools at our disposal to help students navigate life challenges in order to reach their full potential. Crossroads provides educators with those resources. I urge you to act in the best interest of our schools and community support, increase funding for Crossroads and school-based behavioral therapy programs to provide much-needed services to students. Respectfully, Dennis Day, AP Government, AP Macroeconomics, Sandia High School." Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here tonight, and go Matadors.
Kylie Schrader, followed by James Beecher, followed by Dr. Giraldo Cianalo.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kylie Schrader, and I am the Director of Crossroads that Samantha was just talking about, as well as the School-Based Behavioral Health Program at APS. I'm here tonight to ask you to approve the LGCC opioid settlement proposal that includes funding for the expansion of these two programs. It is my understanding that the final vote on this proposal may not happen tonight, but I would like to implore you to reconsider this and make a decision in one meeting, like APS School Board and the city was able to do last night, so that the settlement funds can start to be used like they were intended to with no further delay. What we can offer is, in perfect alignment with the spirit of where opioid settlement funding should go, into direct services offering prevention and intervention at an earlier age in APS schools. APS is ready. I'm ready. We have shared our plan with you, showing how we can immediately increase the scope of our services to reach exponentially more students. We just need you to vote tonight and vote yes to help us remove this last barrier to making this expansion of our programs a reality. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader.
James Beecher, followed by Dr. Giraldo Cianalo, followed by Timothy Huggins.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is James Beecher. I'm a school-based behavioral health therapist working at El Dorado High School. Go Eagles! I'm speaking on behalf of the proposal that, or speaking in support of the proposal that Ms. Schrader put forward as ways to spend the opioid settlement monies, expanding the Crossroads Program into middle schools. I'm going to read a letter that was given to one of my coworkers, a Crossroads Counselor at Sugla High School. She got this letter from a student that she had been working with. So this is what the student said. "I don't have the words to fully express how much Crossroads has meant to me, but I'm going to try my best. Looking back at where I was just a short while ago, it's hard to believe how far I've come. My sophomore year was full of struggles, both in and out of school. I wasn't passing my classes. I was lost in the chaos of using drugs nearly every day. I couldn't see a way out. I was going nowhere, and honestly, I wasn't even sure if I wanted to go anywhere. Then I found Crossroads. It wasn't just a program. It was a lifeline. I walked in with so much doubt about myself and my future, but Crossroads gave me a place to breathe and explore my options without judgment. That alone was more than ever that I ever imagined I would get from a school. Ms. Lisa listened, and when I had no one else to talk to, she believed in me when I couldn't believe in myself, and that made all the difference. It's because of the support I got at Crossroads that I made it to this point. In just two months, I'm going to graduate and head off to UNM. I can't put into, I can't even put into words how amazing it feels to have a future ahead of me."
You can finish your letter.
Oh, thank you. One that I'm proud of, one of, full of opportunities. I owe much to that, I owe much, I owe so much to Crossroads and to Ms. Lisa. I got the tools I needed to change, to believe in myself and to push forward where, when everything else felt impossible. Because of my experience, I fully support and hope for the expansion of Crossroads. The program was life-changing for me, and I believe that with earlier support in elementary or middle schools, I could have made different life choices and taken a better path. I believe that every student deserves hope, and expanding Crossroads would give more kids the chance to believe in themselves, to make better choices, and change their lives. Please vote yes to support the expansion of Crossroads and provide more students with this life-changing opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Giraldo Cianalo, followed by Timothy Huggins, followed by Michelle Medved.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and County Commissioners and staff. I'm a doctor, a minister, and naturalized American citizen. We all recited the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we really understand it, especially "one nation under God"? Despite America's great diversity, nothing unifies Americans more than their support for public acknowledgements of God. Considered 93% want "in God we trust" to remain on coins and currency. 90% support keeping "under God" in the pledge. 84% support references to God in schools, government, buildings, and public setting. 82% support voluntary school prayers. 76% support Ten Commandments displays on public properties. According to President Thomas Jefferson, "The only firm basis of our national liberties is a conviction in minds of the people that our liberties are from God and that government cannot intrude into those liberties without incurring God's wrath." President George Washington likewise admonished, "It is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor." In fact, did you know that it wasn't for our, for our first president, George Washington, we would not have a sovereign nation of USA? We'd have a one-world monarchy, a tyranny ruled under King George III of England without God. And Samuel Adams agreed, reminding Americans, "Him that honor me, I will honor, but he that despise me shall be cursed," First Samuel 2:30. To restore honor and restore America, we first must restore God to His rightful place in our own lives and thinking, and our Constitution need not be rewritten, but re-read into the public arena. It is time for us to be, to re-embrace the truth of President Reagan's warning that if we ever forget that we are "one nation under God," then we will be a nation gunned under. Thank you. May God bless New Mexico and Burneo County.
Thank you, Dr. Cianalo.
Timothy Huggins, followed by Michelle Medved, followed by Juniper Frankel. Please.
Okay. My name is Michelle Medved, and I am one of the two Crossroads Counselors serving roughly half of the twenty-eight middle schools within Albuquerque Public Schools. Because I myself support fifteen of these twenty-eight middle schools, my direct engagement with students is primarily reactive, focused on offering an intervention following substance-related incidents to reduce suspension days. And proactive prevention initiatives are limited to occasional classroom presentations based on an interest from a school and my availability outside of the intervention we offer. The approval of our, of what's on the agenda tonight offers a crucial opportunity to shift this paradigm by providing Albuquerque middle school kids with direct and consistent access to the comprehensive support that I can offer and other, as a Cross, as Crossroads Counselors, moving beyond isolated interventions. With program expansion, each new Crossroads Counselor would support a small cluster of schools, and I would be able to have a dedicated office space at only two middle schools, where I could establish a Crossroads Counseling Program instead of being more of an itinerant interventionist like I am now. This expansion will enable the development of meaningful and ongoing relationships with middle school kiddos, which is a primary factor in itself against substance misuse, and is very exciting. Furthermore, furthermore, the cluster of schools that each Crossroads Counselor serves would include the elementary schools around those clusters, where we can facilitate proactive prevention education and allow for timely early intervention following initial substance use infractions. By approving this proposal, you will be providing middle school students with access to services and establishing substance prevention education in elementary schools that can change their lives and put them on a path, a different path, which is a perfect use of opioid settlement funds. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Juniper Frankel.
Hello. My name is Juniper Frankel. I'm the Crossroads Counselor for Highland High School in Zone 1. We have some of the highest use amongst our students there. These are students that feed from middle schools like Van Buren, Hayes, and Wilson. They start using drugs and alcohol at around age nine to eleven years old, and then I see them at Highland, well-established into their addiction. I'm humbled to have two statements written by students I've served. They're seniors. They're on track to graduate. I'll see them walk across the stage. They inspire me every day, and they were kind enough to write these letters. Starting off the year, and this, this, she's talking about the year I met her, which was three years ago. I got here thinking we, we, the students, could really do whatever we wanted because everything was so laid back. Therefore, my friends and I were not entirely careful when doing things we shouldn't be doing, such as smoking in the bathroom. It was me and two other friends in one stall smoking, when all of a sudden, we heard a voice telling us to come out. After that, we got searched, a phone call home, and sent to Ms. Juniper for PIP, which is the Parent Involvement Program, which I thought was pointless because all I thought to myself was, what is this lady going to say to me to stop doing what I'm doing? But her intentions were way deeper than that. What Ms. Juniper and her classes did was open our eyes to different risks, possibilities, and opportunities. I didn't like going to Ms. Juniper or the classes at first because, of course, we first met in bad circumstances. But over time, Juniper and I developed a great relationship where if I needed to help, I knew I, if I needed help, I could go to her or get advice on school and out-of-school things. Ms. Juniper is actually the person that gave me the last bit of motivation I needed in order to finish scholarships I was having a hard time with. She helped me in every way I needed, giving me...
You can finish up that, that one letter.
Thank you. Giving me her time and attention, and I couldn't be more thankful for that. Ms. Juniper and I's relationship is so different, and I love it. Starting off bad and now ending with her being one of the people I visit and trust the most at this school. Thank you, Ms. Juniper. This is a student who is deeply at risk, both in her personal life and of not being able to graduate. She's on track to graduate. She's a scholarship recipient, and she'll be going to UNM. Because of the Crossroads Program and my ability to be able to meet with her, it made it so. Please vote yes.
Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do.
Timothy Huggins.
Hello, and thank you all for allowing me to be here. My name is Tim Huggins. I'm a Crossroads Counselor, and I'm also a resident of Burneo County. And I am here as a resident of Burneo County. So I've been a Crossroads Counselor now for going on five years. And for me, it's a very personal thing that I do. I do it very passionately. I believe in what I do. I've been a counselor, a school counselor now for over thirty years. And for me, it all began kind of, I grew up in a very abusive household. My father was an alcoholic, or he had an alcohol use disorder. And I was the youngest of five kids, and out of the five kids, all of us got into using. I started using by the age of twelve. And luckily for me, I was able to get free from it. And luckily, I was able, towards, I'm close to the end of my career, to get into Crossroads. It's been a very powerful thing for me to be able to get out and work with the students that I, I work with on a daily basis and hopefully be able to share my story and help them not to end up repeating or falling into the same things that I've had. Recently, just on Monday, I had one student that I ran into, and he's like, "Mr. Huggins, it's been six weeks." And one of the things that I've tried to develop with my students is to look at that. It's one of the benchmarks, that they can make it within six weeks. And so I've been able to celebrate that with my students, and they take it to heart. Without that ability to be out there as a Crossroads Counselor, I don't think I would have that exposure with my students. I often tell my students that one of my biggest regrets in the years that I got into substance use was I lost all my teenage years. I'll never get those back. It might be too late for me to get those years back, but it's not too late for us to be able to save or change the lives of the children today. So I urge you, I hope you, that you'll be able to expand our exposure to our kids and help us to reach more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Huggins.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we completed our in-person speakers, and now we are moving to our online speakers. Lisa Searley.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I might be having some camera issue. For some odd reason, it is not picking up my camera, but I apologize. Good evening, my name is Lisa Searle. I'm the Crossroads counselor here at Sebelah High School. Believe it or not, I was going to read the letter that James Beecher read because that is my student, and I am the Miss Lisa, that was mentioned in that letter. But since that plan went awry, I'm just going to speak from the heart. I've been a Crossroads counselor for twelve years, and I've seen a lot of students come through my doors, and I've seen some success stories, and I've seen some stories not go so well. But one thing has been a constant, is the Crossroads program has been a lifeline for students. We have amazing people helping amazing students every day. And the possibility of that program being expanded is... It makes me emotional because I know the impact that it has in children's lives, because these children's lives are at risk, and it's because of the pervasiveness of opioids in our community. Burno Leo is in an epidemic. The city of Albuquerque is in an epidemic. And I know that this might not get voted on today, but I urge you to please reconsider because our children are in crisis, our students are in crisis, our community is in crisis. We have a chance to act now, not in a month, not in two months, not in a year. Crossroads is in place now. My supervisor, Kylie Sherter, all she needs to do is put an ad out to hire people, to interview. We can have people in place in months, not years, not even by the end of this school year. She could have people there to help students. We need people in elementary schools, middle schools, because that's when kids are starting to use now. It's not sixteen or seventeen. We talked to fifth graders, fifth graders, that are exposed to opioids, weed, alcohol. So I urge you today, please vote. Please vote on the plan that we have in place. Don't wait. Don't waste the children's time. Thank you.
Julie Rawn.
Good evening, Chair Olivas and Commissioners. My name is Julie Rawn, and I'm with the Vital Strategies Overdose Prevention Program. Vital Strategies worked closely with the county manager's office and the city's Department of Health and Housing Homelessness to develop the strategic plan for opioid settlement funds, which served as a foundation for the LGCC Joint Implementation Plan. I would like to commend the county commission for your leadership in partnering with the city of Albuquerque and requiring that a joint plan to be in place before more funds are spent. This kind of coordination is essential for strategic investing to maximize impact of these funds. I also want to commend the LGCC for the commitment to community engagement in the joint plan. The Vital Strategies recommendations were shaped by extensive community input from more than seventeen hundred constituents, including almost seven hundred people who use drugs. Nearly every town hall and listening session included feedback on the necessity of continued community engagement. Notably, the joint plan calls for active engagement with neighboring native communities. Tribal governments and native-led organizations should be meaningfully involved in the allocation and receipt of these funds. While some tribal governments are receiving funds from the tribal opioid settlements nationally, these monies equal less than five percent of the funds that states and localities are getting. So additional investments are also essential to address disproportionately high levels of beta overdose among native communities. Vital Strategies is ready to work alongside the county and the city in this implementation phase with no-cost technical assistance to support a public-facing dashboard as well as ongoing community engagement and tribal inclusion. Thank you, and we look forward to our continued partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Rawn, and I just wanted to take a moment here and thank you for all your support. It's just been an incredible honor and pleasure working with you and your team at Vital Strategies. Have really provided us some amazing technical assistance at both the city and the county, and really has just been an incredible asset to have you on the team and continue to have you on the team going forward. So thank you for being here tonight.
Kaylee Tomlin.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kelly Tomlin. I am currently one of only five behavioral health therapists employed at Albuquerque Public Schools. I serve Monzano High School, and I'm also a parent and a foster parent of two teen boys from CYFD. And I would like to illustrate to you why I think more funding of our positions within APS is so important. I grew up in the International District, and it wasn't until the last year of my NMSU graduate school program, when I was doing social work internship at CYFD, did I realize that Albuquerque had a very serious underbelly of problems. While working at CYFD, after weeks of bending over backwards to try to help a drug-addicted parent get into treatment, the frustration boiled over, and I broke down and cried in my supervisor's office. And I said, "I'm doing everything I can, dragging a horse to water, but she just won't go. I'm so frustrated because she's going to lose her children." And my supervisor said, "Kelly, maybe social work isn't for you. You cannot control the choices that other people make." And it was a harsh reality, and I lasted another six to eight months before I quit CYFD, and I was a green, idealistic social worker with a lot to learn. But one thing I did learn in my four years at CYFD was that when we would offer inpatient drug rehabilitation at Turquoise Lodge or substance abuse counseling programs, most of the parents I worked with would still choose the drug over getting treatment for their addiction, even with the threat of losing their children. At the time, I could not understand them making that choice, but I have come to understand that for many, their trauma and mental illness is so untreated that their addiction to numb with drugs has such a grip on them that they choose to stay in the addiction. And I would love to believe that offering a drug rehab facility is the magic solution, but in many cases, it isn't. Early intervention and prevention is the key to controlling outcomes. We cannot let young people even get to the point of getting addicted to these powerful drugs as a coping mechanism. This is why funding these positions within APS is so important, and we have a great opportunity to help these young people process these adverse childhood experiences and teach healthy coping tools while they are so moldable and teachable. This is the golden time for us to influence them. I hope you will see the importance of this funding going into these programs at APS. Thank you.
Jennifer Topley.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you guys today. My name is Jennifer Topley. I'm a behavioral health therapist with Albuquerque Public Schools. I'm here to ask you for your support in using the proposed opioid settlement funding to strengthen mental health services in our schools. Currently, there are only five of us, five school-based behavioral health therapists in the whole district. With expansion, we could reach many more elementary and middle schools to provide early intervention and prevention. Every day, I work with children facing trauma, grief, and addiction. Early support helps build resilience and prevent long-term struggles like substance misuse. One of my students, Alex, wanted to be here tonight but wasn't able to attend, so she gave me permission to read the letter she wrote about her experience within our program. Most of my problems started in the sixth grade, family issues, grief, and an evolving drug issue, which is when I met Miss Topley. She wasn't my original counselor, but she always made me feel welcome. I never really felt comfortable telling adults about my genuine feelings, but it was different with her. It was safe. During my three years at McKinley, I went through events you wouldn't wish on your worst enemy. Miss Topley was there for all of it and was always my ally, never judged, but simply pushed me towards the right path. There was a time period where I was going through a heavy drug addiction. Miss Topley used tough, sorry, tough love with me. It was either the drugs or my happiness, and I chose the drugs, although she never gave up on me. She welcomed me with open arms when I was ready to be better, just as she always has. The biggest thing I've had the pleasure of learning during my three years as one of her kids is that you control your own life. It's your world, everyone else is just living in it. Miss Topley showed me to love myself when no one else did, that the most important love is self-love. And at the end of my eighth-grade year, the only thing I didn't regret was letting her into my personal bubble. I hope this helps you understand what kind of person Miss Topley is, because she helped me understand who I am, and I think that's a privilege that everyone should have. Alex's story shows the power of early mental health support. With this proposed funding, we could grow these services from five to as many as forty-two schools. I urge you to consider the impact this could have, not only just for students like Alex, but for our entire community. Thank you.
Shannon Porch.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Shannon Porch. I'm one of the five behavioral health therapists in APS. Tonight, I'm reading a letter of support from my school administrator. She writes, "Let me take you on a journey into the life of an elementary school teacher. Imagine you are a fourth-grade teacher. It's Monday morning. You had a great weekend, you're feeling refreshed. The tardy bell rings, and students start to walk into your class. You immediately notice one of your students walk in with her head down, and when you approach her, she pulls her sleeves down over her arms. When observing her for the next ten minutes, you observe fresh cuts on her arms. At this moment, your next move depends on staffing at your school. If you are fortunate enough to have a behavioral health therapist on staff, you can pick up the radio and request for support. The student will receive immediate support, guidance, and care from a trained professional. This is a critical moment in this child's life, a turning point, an opportunity to intervene early to change her trajectory. This moment will determine if she gets the help and support she needs or if she will continue down the path of unhealthy coping strategies. However, if you do not have anyone to call, what would you do? How would you provide support, counseling, and care for this student? The weight of your next moves is immediately felt on your shoulders and in your heart, as well as the need to continue teaching the student her grade-level standards. So I'm asking you today, what would you do if you had nobody could call? Please consider supporting our behavioral health therapists in our elementary schools where early intervention is critical. We do appreciate your time. Thank you so much."
Deanna Valdez.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Dear council members, my name is Deanna Valdez, and I am the Crossroads counselor at Valley High School. I am speaking to request your support for funding to expand the Crossroads and Behavioral Health Programs. They are vital resources that directly benefit our students and their families. As a Crossroad counselor, I have witnessed firsthand the transformative impact this comprehensive program has on young people. Crossroads is more than just prevention. Our services offer prevention, intervention, and education. As a mother of a son who has struggled with drug addiction since his teenage years, I also understand the personal challenges families face when dealing with addiction. Expanding Crossroads will provide more students with the tools they need to navigate difficult circumstances. I'm also going to read a letter from the school counselor at Washington Middle School. Her name is Leah Viscara, and she also happens to be my sister. Here's her letter. "I am writing this letter in support of the Crossroads program. I am a counselor at APS Middle School and work with our assigned Crossroads counselor on a regular basis. The work these counselors do is tremendously important and is another resource that my students and families can turn to when facing the challenges that substance use can present. My students enjoy working with Carrie Apostle, one of the middle school Crossroads counselors, as she is a neutral person they can communicate with and feel supported by without fear of judgment or consequences. I myself value having a collaborative relationship with Carrie as she provides many resources and ideas in regards to substance use and adolescence that I may not be aware of. I feel thankful that I can reach out to Carrie at any time with questions or concerns and will be supported and guided in the right direction. Aside from working with Carrie, I have had the opportunity to attend presentations given by different Crossroads counselors, and the presentations have all been very informative. I feel like the Crossroads counselors do an excellent job of staying up to date with current substance use trends that affect children of all ages. They also are diligent in sharing this information with us school counselors so that we can then educate, inform, and support our students and families effectively and appropriately. I am very thankful for the Crossroads program, and I'm hopeful that every school can eventually have this amazing resource on campus. And we both thank you for your consideration."
Mr. Chair, that conclude our public's comments.
Thank you very much, and I just want to extend a special thank you to all the folks from APS Crossroads that came out tonight to share your really powerful stories coming out on your time off. I know that that's what we ask of all of our people and education teachers, counselors, everybody, so really appreciate you being here and the powerful work that you do. And I did want to just clear up one sort of misconception. We will be voting on this tonight. It is on our introduction calendar, so we basically, each item now requires two hearings. And so it's not as though we won't be considering this. This is the first hearing, and then it'll go to final passage on the next meeting. So I don't want you to feel like we're deferring this or putting this off. We are absolutely moving this forward a hundred percent. This is very important, so just wanted to say that. So with that being said, we will go ahead and move on to our communications. We have one item tonight from Operations and Maintenance, an update on our Keep Burn Co. Beautiful initiative from Director Antonio Jaramillo.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners, thank you. My name is Antonio Jaramillo. I'm the Director of Operations and Maintenance. I'm going to yield my time to these beautiful individuals behind me. We're going to be talking a little bit about, you know, some of the initiatives that we have with the Keep Burn Co. Beautiful. They've done excellent work, and I'm proud to, you know, stand with them. Some of our briefing topics will be talking about the members, you know, the mission, accomplishments, and then we have a plug for additional appointments. So I'll turn it over to the Executive Director and our Solid Waste Manager, Gabe Vieskas, and also our Chair of the Board, and Mark Acton.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair. I am pleased to introduce the Keep Burn Co. Beautiful Board members, Mark Acton, the Board Chair. We have Elizabeth Reed and Karen Baker with us this evening, and myself. My name is Gabriel Vieskas. I'm the Executive Director and also the Solid Waste Manager for Public Works. The Keep Burn Co. Board member's mission is to promote accountability through outreach and educational efforts, provide a clean and healthy community for our residents, develop and implement plans, programs, and initiatives that will preserve the nature, beauty of Burno Leo County, and recruit members of the general public to assist in these efforts. Through initiatives such as our Breaking Butts Recycling receptacles, we have built eighteen units and employed fourteen to date. We have collected seventy pounds of butts, of cigarette butts, which equates to approximately seven thousand units that are going to be kept out of the waterways. Okay? They will be repurposed and recycled into some plastic products. Let's see, what else we got here? Our community cleanup effort, such as the Mountain View Cleanup, yielded twenty-four thousand pounds of trash and debris that potentially could have become pollutants if not disposed of properly. We had nine committed volunteers helping us at this event. Illegal dumping is still an ongoing problem in Burno Leo County that the Board hopes to address. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Acton to explain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, for having us. I've never been introduced as a beautiful person before, so thanks for that. We really stress illegal dumping with our group, and we were able to take a tour in some hot spots where this illegal dumping occurs. It was really quite shocking what we saw out there. It's not typical, plastic bottles, plastic bags, but abandoned vehicles, construction materials, drums of oil, and old tires as far as the eye can see. So really shocking what we saw there, not, can't go into much more detail with the limited time, but it's great to see the accomplishments that Gabe and his team have done with the cleanups out there. We keep them busy. We've got five events coming up this weekend, and so we're, you know, keeping busy with those. We've got a calendar online with those events, and that's kind of a new thing as our website. As far as, if you could go to the next slide. Do we have slides? Oh, it's me. I'm sorry. You heard that right, Breaking Butts. We are collecting cigarette butts with a Breaking Bad theme. And so with that, we were awarded, there was a competition with the company that we turn our butts into. It's called TerraCycle. They take the filter of a cigarette butt, turn it into park benches and hand tools and things like that, things you wouldn't imagine cigarettes could be used for. And we were, there was a competition in December, which we ranked third nationally, so we received an award for that. Another accomplishment is we got the President's Circle Award with Keep America Beautiful, our affiliate. And so we're accomplishing things, we're keeping Gabe and his team busy, and we're only operating at sixty percent capacity. So we come not only presenting the good, the bad, and the ugly, but we also come with a request to fill the two open spots. a request to fill the two open spots on our Board, Districts Two and Three, so that we can be firing on all cylinders to, to, to be firing on all cylinders to expand the reach and promote the impact that we're having to keep our, our county beautiful. So thank you. With that, I guess we'll open it for questions.
We have a couple more slides we want to present to you. This, of course, some of the before and afters, you know, we have presented the illegal dumping initiative, and of course, we had the Earth Day Event, which is, you know, Earth Day is going to be coming up here in the next week or so. We do have, like Mark mentioned, we do have the Earth Day Event happening this weekend. And of course, these are our accolades that we received, so, and again, we are soliciting for Districts Two and District Three if you guys have some appointments there. So we stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you especially to the, to the Board Members, Board Chair, everyone who's present here tonight, and, and for your good work. Commissioner Frank Baca.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I see that we do have vacancy for my district, and we'll get to work on that. I am compulsive about picking up trash myself personally, and as you and your staff may know, I tend to get on the phone and call when I see something or somebody reports it. I don't delay doing it. I do it right then and there because I think it's important for our community. My question to you is, if anybody else in the community was to watch this, what would you say is the best way for somebody to just simply call in to report something that needs to be picked up immediately?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, the, the best way to do that is to call our contact center. They will issue a, a work order for, for Gabe and his team, and they will get on it right away. Usually we have, we're pretty good about addressing those issues within a 24-hour timeframe, and that's our goal, and we're pretty successful at that. But sometimes if it's a bigger issue, you know, it might take a little bit additional resources, but that's our, that's our goal.
And that number is?
Ooh, that's, I knew you were going to ask me that, and I don't remember it offhand.
468 number?
468-7777.
Yeah, I know, my heart.
Now that's it.
Thanks, Lisa.
Any other Commissioners? I did want to ask you, could you highlight for us real quick what the, what the upcoming Earth Day Event or Events might be?
So this weekend, we have five events. Four of them is on, are on Saturday. The first event is we're having community cleanup near, and I believe it's Commissioner Barbara Baca's Tyler and Edith, correct?
Yes.
And then we also have a, an event at Alvarado, Alvarado Elementary School. We also have the Earth Day Event, which is on Sunday. We also have our Free Waste Event at our East Mountain Transfer Station. And then what's the fifth one?
Mr. Olivas' sponsored Earth Day.
Yes, sponsored Earth Day. I knew I was forgetting some, that, that, that one as well.
Save the best for last.
Yeah, exactly.
10 to, 10 to 2, I believe, at the Tijeras Village Hall. We're also partnering with the Land Grant, our great staff at Solid Waste. So always thankful for the, the support you guys provide to us to, to do those cleanup events, and we'll definitely have a good turnout, so appreciate you all. Appreciate what you do. Anything else? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The consent agenda has been published and made available to the public, therefore I move approval.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signal an affirmative. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The motion passes on a five to zero. And I'm going to start using the, the little gavel to signal when we're actually done with, with an item, just to kind of move us along because I've seen some confusion at times where we're at. All right. Madam Clerk, could you please provide resolution numbers for Items 7A and 7B?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item 7A1 is AR 2025-33. 7A2 is AR 2025-34. 7A3 is AR 2025-35. And Item 7B is AR 2025-36.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And so our first three items here, A, B, and C, we've got Director Marcos Gonzalez to present on this extension to the Sawmill District IRB.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first we'll just cover about what is an IRB. So this is an economic development tool that we have here at the county that provides, oh, that struck me, sorry, that provides tax exemption for covering gaps in projects and being able to actually make the project come to fruition. So in turn, for having the tax exemption, the county is provided with job creation for the community, private investment in the community, and a payment in lieu of taxes. But for the IRB, the project couldn't go forward and cash flow. So the three projects we're talking about this evening are the Chaco Residence, the mixed-use apartments at Sawmill, and the Sawmill Hotel. And all three have an IRB with various investments amounts. And so the action that we're talking about this evening is to extend the negotiating, negotiating period. Currently, the inducement resolutions would expire on April 20th, and so this would extend the, give a provider an additional 180 days, which would extend it out to April 8th of 2025. However, we don't anticipate needing that much time to finish negotiations and bring the IRBs back for final adoption. Unless there's further questions about the project specifically, I'll stand for any questions at this point.
All right. Thank you, Director. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Baca, your item, do you have any comment?
I just urge everyone's support to extend this as we continue with the developer on negotiations, so thank you.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, did you want to make a motion?
I move approval.
I'll second. And seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signal an affirmative. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a five, zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next up, we have Director Amanda Colburn to present the 2025-2026 Burnley County Housing Department Plan.
Good evening, Chair Olivas, members of the Commission. The item before you this evening is the Administrative Resolution for the 25-26 Housing Department Annual Plan as required by Housing and Urban Development or HUD. Housing authorities are required to submit an annual plan each year as a framework for the housing authority. Community input is solicited, and our plan is available for public review throughout our process. The process begins in early January and is posted in the newspaper as required by HUD 45 days prior to our public hearing, which took place on March 19th. The plan is then brought to the Commission, and once approved, is uploaded and submitted to HUD by our April 17th deadline. The annual plan consists of various forms that are, including the HUD-required documents and approvals, chapters of our administrative plan, the county's most recently approved act for an audit, and the Community Service Consolidated Action Plan from the Mortgage Finance Authority. Currently, the Housing Department is requesting board approval for the Administrative Resolution approving the 25-26 Annual Plan as Required by HUD. And we're requesting that it be approved tonight so that we meet our HUD deadlines. I stand for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. Commissioner Frank Baca first.
Just a comment. I would like to thank Director Colburn for her time and giving me and others. Turned out to be quite a crowd, and which was very appreciated and welcome, the time that folks spent, and appreciate your knowledge and expertise. And, you know, housing is a very interesting and complicated dynamic, and I'm very, very interested in learning about it. And I appreciate the role that, that you play and our, and our Housing Department plays in that. And I think it's, you know, for me, it is just absolutely crucial to have a good understanding of what the needs are in our community and to have a very targeted approach to addressing those problems. So every time I, somebody explains something to me, I really appreciate it because it helped, helped me understand the, the big picture. And we talked a lot about supportive housing. We talked about another big topic of concern of mine, which is homelessness prevention, which kind of gets to the issue before it gets started. And so as we go forward, I really hope that we continue to emphasize those two, just from my perspective. But thank you for your time and all that you, the time that you, you gave, sharing your knowledge with us.
Chair Olivas, Commissioner Baca, thank you. It was a great conversation that we had.
Other Commissioners, Vice Chair Barbara.
Hi, thank you, Director Colburn. And I understand this is the HUD approval that sort of happens every year, and I think the previous Director had told me that there's really hard to change this as a federal government. I do, in the various committees I serve on, there's a consistent question about vouchers, and now there's like different various ways that vouchers are given or distributed, where the money comes from, how, who they're allowed to give to. I would like to request through our County Manager that there, maybe we could think of some way to be transparent or help inform and educate community, myself, about where those different buckets of money, where they're allowed to go to. I think we can create a visual graphic or something that we have on our website, something that really helps folks understand, including the providers that are, you know, basically scrapping for those vouchers, so they can know when and when they get distributed and what time they could be expecting them or not. So I know there's limitations about what we could do at the, what we get from federal dollars, but I'd like to see some transparency around how they're distributed, not just from us, but in general.
Chair Olivas, Vice Chair Barbara, absolutely. Housing would be happy to put some kind of graphic together that explains a little bit more how our vouchers are distributed.
Wonderful. Thank you, and thanks for your work.
Mr. Bitson, did you? Okay. Sorry. Just kind of a, sort of a, I guess, yeah, it's a question. Can you tell me how many vouchers your department manages?
Chair Olivas, members of the Commission, our Housing Department manages about 3,500 federal vouchers, and then an additional almost 400 Community Connection Supportive Housing vouchers, which is funded through our Behavioral Health Program.
So almost 4,000 in total?
No, almost 2,500, a little over 2,500 in total.
Trying to do math on the spot here. And then how many public housing units do you manage?
So Commissioner Olivas, Chair Olivas, we do not have public housing units through Burnley County Housing. We have 75 units that we own, but they are not through the public housing program. They are project-based voucher units that are, have a general housing choice voucher in them on a project-based side, so they do not go through any of the public housing process. So we have 75 units that we currently own.
And is that number, since those are vouchered, is that included in the number you gave before, or is that in addition to?
It's included in that number, sir.
Okay. Very good. Really appreciate that. Do we have a motion?
Move approval.
And a second, so a motion from the Vice Chair and a second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal an affirmative.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a five, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have our Introduction of Resolutions. This is a new section to our agenda. So just to give a little context here, all resolutions now require two hearings before final approval, except in cases of a rule suspension. The first hearing will serve as the resolution's introduction. The public is encouraged to review the introduced resolutions and sign up to ask questions or provide public input. Items may be debated, amended, or substituted at introduction or at the final adoption hearing. The following items that we will consider now will return at a subsequent meeting for final adoption consideration. And so with that, first up, we have, Madam Vice Chair and I will be presenting along with Deputy County Manager Wayne Lindstrom, the LGCC Joint Opioid Settlement Implementation Plan. And I think I'd like to go to my co-sponsor first, and then we can go to Dr. Lindstrom for a little more detail.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair. You know, we started on this, I realized it was October of 2023 that this commitment was first passed, so we're a little over a year, but I, I just want to thank this Commission and all the folks who've been participating in making sure that we have a plan around how we think about using these opioid settlement dollars. I, I've said many times before, but I'm not going to miss saying it again, that these are literally off of people's lives. Like people have died, and their families have been impacted, and it creates a ripple effect across all our communities. And so these are pharmaceutical, I also want to be very clear that these are pharmaceutical companies that target, targeted our neighborhoods, targeted our vulnerable populations, and because they knew that we were prime candidates, right? And so this is proven now through settlement lawsuits and monies that will be coming into government, that these are off the backs of those folks and their loved ones who I get to hear from often. So the city and the county committed to combining their resources. But also for me, the biggest point about combining resources was about collaboration between our city and county. When I first, I have to admit that when I first came into council about four, Commission four years ago, you know, there was like, oh, this is the county, and we do this, but we don't mess with the city. I'd go to city folks, and they'd say, oh, it's the city, and we don't mess with the county. Well, I can tell you that the taxpayer dollars in my district and across our whole entire community don't understand what source the money's coming from. They just understand that they're in need. And so we need to fill that need, and we need to be the responsible professional folks that collaborate for the betterment of our community. So I'm looking forward to this. I think we've been thoughtful. We've debated, and we haven't always agreed, but I think we came out with a good product. And I also just want to say that, you know, I want to say thank you also to Julie Rahn and Vital Strategies Team that brought some real expertise, some support, and also to Cindy Suckman, who, you know, when nobody else wanted to run a whole slew of town halls in a short period of time, she and her team got it done, and it was resources that we needed. And we did robust community engagement and spoke with providers and heard from, I really feel like we, we made, we made this so accessible. Through that process, the local government coordinating council then, you know, Vital Strategies, I think, had some 20, 20-plus recommendations, maybe 28? I can't remember the number. It's a lot, but obviously very needed, and I'm glad they didn't decide to leave anyone behind, right? We then, at the local government coordinating council, prioritized eight categories. And I just want to be really clear, in my opinion, that is just a start, right? These eight categories are prioritization. That doesn't mean those number of recommendations aren't to be followed and returned to, and that all the city government, city, county, and APS should be looking to those and how we continue to meet those greater needs in addition to these eight priorities that we are for now prioritizing to, to hopefully make a dent in the problem that we see before us. So again, I expect the Vital Strategies full set of recommendations to be returned to often. I also expect that as we start to distribute, that the theme is really around partnerships and relationships, right? Too often, we get so siloed, and I know the work is hard and heavy, but for schools, you should be connecting with our community school partners. We should, for the, you know, keeping them alive right now is a resource of families that both helps people impact it, but also is educating our community. So how do we make those partnerships with law enforcement, fire? So many people I've learned care about this, but we're not always connecting the issues. So please allow this resource to be part of the ways that we keep connecting. Sometimes I ask people about if they know one program, if they know about the separate program. I think it's important that we know about each other. So when you can't serve somebody, that you also refer them to somewhere else that might be able to help. I know we ask a lot of our providers, but I think this is the connecting and the relationships are really what has the ability to build the kind of ecosystem of care that our community so desperately need. So I ask you to also engage your principals, engage your staff members, engage the folks that you think may not care about this issue. It doesn't matter, please talk to them. Let's use this resource to be the place that creates real solutions driven by and for the communities most impacted. So thank you, and I, I think we did a good job, and nothing's ever perfect, but, and nothing's going to completely solve the problem, but we can make a dent, and especially if we continue to work together. And thank you to Dr. Lindstrom, who really has been a lifesaving force and expertise in this field to really guide our county work. to really guide our county work. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So a good segue to a hearing from Dr. Wayne Lindstrom, our Deputy County Manager of Behavioral Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Madam Vice Chair, members of the Commission. I'm Wayne Lindstrom, the Deputy County Manager for Behavioral Health. What I'm about to present in many ways reiterates what it is that you both have said here this evening and then provides some broader context in addition. If you go back in time, as Commissioner Barboia stated a bit ago, this all started in October of 23 when companion resolutions were passed by the city and the county. And a joint MOU was executed, Memorandum of Understanding, around utilizing the expertise of Vital Strategies and crafting a strategic plan around the use of the opioid settlement funds. And they wisely contracted with Cindy Sockman, who not only did the town halls, but she also did focus groups and did interviews with actually people who are living on the streets and suffer from substance use disorders and other behavioral health conditions. So she really did a heavy lift in the best interest, I think, of our community. In October of 24, Vital Strategies actually presented the strategic plan to us and it did carry 28 recommendations overall. In March of 25, after a number of subcommittee meetings, the LGCC passed a joint opioid settlement implementation plan. And last night, this plan was presented to the city council. And at the time that I did this presentation, I didn't know what the outcome was going to be, but I'm happy to report that the implementation plan was passed last night. And there was only one amendment, which we can talk about, should you like to do that in the Q and A portion of this. And tonight, we're doing an introduction of the opioid settlement implementation plan. I wanted to quote something that Commissioner Barboia had said in her role as the LGCC Chair. Quote, "This is an unprecedented opportunity to apply $150 million to meaningfully expand programs, services, and facilities and provide comprehensive wraparound services to those in our community suffering from substance use disorders." Out of those 28 recommendations that we referenced earlier, this is a listing of the eight. Of those recommendations were prioritized by the LGCC. The first is connecting disconnected youth, providing comprehensive education, expanding peer support services, doing more in terms of providing recovery housing, more community-based intensive levels of treatment, leveraging the sobering center at Gateway, doing more with regards to harm reduction and naloxone access, and lastly, expanding mobile crisis response services. Other recommendations included using the Behavioral Health Advisory Board as the advisory body relative to these funds for both the city and the county. As you may recall, the Behavioral Health Advisory Board came into being as a result of the Behavioral Health Ordinance that you all passed back on June 28th of last year. There's also a recommendation, and this was also in the strategic plan itself, that there be a joint publicly facing dashboard. And you heard Julie Ron talk about that from Vital Strategies during the public comment period. There's an expectation that we build capacity and sustainability for small to medium-sized providers, that we provide infrastructure grants and that we provide dedicated funding to the Albuquerque Public Schools. And you heard considerable comment and advocacy in that regard earlier this evening. And that we implement a three-phase implementation process. There was a recommendation as well that 40% of these funds be committed to prevention and community revitalization and that 60% be devoted to intervention and treatment. With regards to our implementation process, we intend to utilize our behavioral health multi-award vendors for Phase One. This would be immediate action so that we could get money on the streets and begin actual program and capacity building within six months. That we leverage the Behavioral Health Advisory Board to convene a community town hall and that we utilize the expertise and technical assistance that will be available to us from Vital Strategies to have that publicly facing dashboard where we have clear performance metrics and transparency around how we're utilizing dollars and what we're able to actually demonstrate in terms of results. And so we, well, in addition to that, that spelled out within the implementation plan is that we collaborate with the city around a streamlined procurement process for those small to medium providers who don't have necessarily a good deal of capacity and infrastructure to access these types of funds. So moving forward, we've had approval from the LGCC and last night from city council. And you'll have this up for deliberation and consideration at your next meeting. And when that happens, we'll be continuing our work around implementation with the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lindstrom. Really, really appreciate you walking us through the, the last few slides there, especially on how the, how you're proposing to actually implement this. That's a really important part of this because we can make all the, the great policy in the world and if it's not implemented, it, it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't help anyone. So I'm going to go ahead and say a few words here real quick before we open up to the, to the full commission. As, as a co-sponsor here, I just want to commend our Vice Chair, who's been, been with me on this from the very beginning, for, for getting the city and the county together on this and APS as we got this to the LGCC. And there's been so many collaborative efforts here. So it's not just our Vice Chair, but also the, at the time it was Chair Rogers on the LGCC, who really took a leadership role here in pushing to dive in here and, and form a subcommittee to really wrap our heads around this. And, and it took a lot of, a lot of time, a lot of hard work, but it really paid off. And, and other councilors as well, you know, last night on the, on the council, we had four co-sponsors, which is the most you can have on a resolution. And we have two on ours, which is also the most you can have. And I suspect we would have others if, if we could have more, right? Because everybody realizes how important this is. So to Councilor Feeblecorn, to Councilor Renee Grouse, Councilor Dan Champagne, who are all also critical to this effort and, and members of the LGCC. So really enjoyed working with them and collaborating with them on this. And I do want to, to emphasize that while the city council has approved this, it still requires the mayor's signature. And that is something that, that we all need to be speaking to our mayor and speaking to our, our city administration and emphasizing, you know, how important this is to move this forward and continue this collaborative effort. It's passed on an eight to one vote, you know, bipartisan from the city council. Democrats and Republicans, people across the aisle, recognize this problem, the scope of this problem. And I think that we've come up with, as Vice Chair said, a very innovative solution here. This, this doesn't do everything. I've been saying this from the very beginning. As much money as this is, it's $150 million. We've spent some of it, so minus that. Some of it comes in all the way up to like 20, 36 or something like that.
38.
38. So we don't have $150 million in hand. That's between the city and county. So, you know, when you, when you subtract all of these things out, it's not as much money as you think it is on the face of it. And so we can't be everyone, everything to everyone all the time with this money. But I think with a strategic targeted approach, which I believe is what we have, I think we can make a big impact. And I'm not even going to try to, to make the kind of eloquent statement that Councilor Feeblecorn made last night. But in summary, we want to be able to look back on this in five years, in 10 years and really be able to point to the impact that this had. Rather than going around and filling little holes and, you know, throw $100,000 here and, you know, a little bit of money here and there, we want to really target strategic investments in places where we can look back in 10 years and talk to our community, tell our community, this really had an impact. And so I really believe this, this Crossroads Program is an opportunity to do that, right? To, to say to our community down the line, this had an impact. This is real prevention. And we were able to intervene, intervene early and actually stop the cycle, right? Reduce our costs later on, our cost to our community, our cost to our budgets because we intervened early. And these programs to support providers are really critical because as much as I, as I love the work that we're doing at the tiny home village or that the city is doing at the Gateway Center, oftentimes it's our nonprofit providers that are in the trenches, often operating some of those facilities for us, but always out in the community with their own facilities, with their own programs and doing it from the bottom of their hearts. I mean, some of the most dedicated people that I've ever met in, in this space, behavioral health and substance use treatment, have lived the, you know, they've walked the walk. They've, they've lived on the streets. They've, they've used and they've recovered. And they're using their experience to benefit our community. And we've heard that from, from some of our Crossroads Councilors tonight. So this invests in those providers. And that to me is really exciting too, because I think we can look back on that and say, you know, we didn't have to go to other states and bring in out-of-state for-profit corporations to run some of our facilities as is happening in some places right now in this community. If we can grow our own, right? Grow those people that love New Mexico. They love our county and our place. And they want to help the people that are here, the people they grew up with. And, and so we're investing in them. So I really think this is all around a very good proposal, a plan. And so I, I hope that all of my colleagues will support it. And, and so with that, I, I would, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second from Vice Chair Barboia. And we'll open up the floor to, to discussion and comments, questions. Commissioner Frank Baca, and then we'll go to Commissioner Benson.
Just a couple of comments, and I'm obviously late to this game. I just want to congratulate everybody for the work and the product. I did have a chance to sit in on a couple of the town halls back in the fall of last year and I was very impressed by what I heard, the people that showed up, the passion that they showed, the presentation. I mean, and, you know, I, as you might have known, I really support community engagement as a process. And I think there was substantial community engagement. And, and I finally got around to reading the entire report. I started it a couple of times. I finally finished it off. It was very impressive work. And Vital Strategies, who I understand, did this without charge to the, you know, the governmental agency, very, very impressive. And so the idea of collaboration with these other entities is so important. The process, the element of community engagement is so important. But also as important to me as I'm reading it and reviewing it is the idea of the, of the dashboard and the, the, I think the, the words I saw, clear, centralized, and publicly accessible information, which I think is so important for us to all know how money is being spent and for that being kept everybody, public and, and, and government as well. And just as, as you all know, and I'm probably the only one that didn't know this, but, you know, the payments that I'm looking at, the charts and the materials, I mean, beside the large lump sum in the first year, which we've already received, you know, range from a couple of million to a little, about four million over the next 16, 17 years or so. So that amount of money, right, is what we're dealing with going forward, about $2 to $3 million a year, the county share. But that combined with the 1/8 to 1% behavioral health tax, which goes up to, I think currently is at the rate of, of coming in at $32 million per year and hopefully will continue going up by 2 or 3% per year. So between those two funds and other sources, I mean, I think there is a great opportunity to really have a significant impact. So I just want to congratulate everybody involved in that and thank everybody, wish I could have been involved more. But I'm glad to see that, the product. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. And I want to just add one thing there to, to Vital Strategies. I don't think it was mentioned. So yes, they, they were contracted for free, which is an unusual thing in, in government especially. And they have also committed to continuing to support these efforts for, I believe it's about another 18 months. Is that correct, Dr. Lindstrom?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. Until October of 26, they will provide us with a technical advisor. Legal is now reviewing the agreement with Vital Strategies and HR is reviewing the position description. And this will be their employee, but they will be working with the county and the city around assisting with the implementation.
Thank you, Dr. Lindstrom. So in effect, they will help manage this dashboard and all of the transparency and accountability in the public meetings. And so allowing our resources to go directly into the streets. And, and so really want to thank them. Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to, to say how impressive the, the final product is, especially considering how many, how many bodies were involved in the process. And it did take a long time, but there was so much input. And to your point, making sure this money was used well. To Commissioner Barboia's point, that this funding is, is coming to us on the backs of the lives of, lives lost from the opioid settlement. And so Vital Strategies, their efforts, bringing in community voices in, Dr. Lindstrom and our Behavioral Health Department, the City of Albuquerque, with members rotating on and off. This committee, Burnley County, we've got Albuquerque Public Schools, all with different priorities. And so I don't think anybody got everything they wanted. And yet we still ended up with a, a final project that I think everybody's happy with. And I, I think it was just a, a successful endeavor between many entities. And I just want to congratulate everybody involved in it and, for sure, definitely. And, and then it's a lot of work that we're going to keep doing moving forward. This is just kind of the, the gun going off at the race. Now we start the process. So, yeah, well done to everybody. And thank you both for leading this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Commissioner Barbara Baca.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dr. Lindstrom, for that very succinct and very quality presentation for the public as well as for this body. I think that, I mean, I want to show the public, this is the Vital Strategies document that took, so a year in government time is really not that long when you, when it results in outreach to the community, taking that information in, analyzing it, working together with three bodies, three agencies on our LGCC. It is, is pretty amazing to me that we are here where we are. And I, I am in full support of this, this plan. I do want to make a, a really important statement that was on your slide, that 40% of this is, has been recommended to be used for prevention, 60% for intervention and treatment. And we talk often about that and it is so important. But I have a constituent, and many of you in the field know him, Dr. Bill Wagner. He served on our work group when we created the environment, excuse me, the, the Behavioral Health depart, division. What are we? Division now? Yes. Anyway, the great work that we are doing now with our Behavioral Health Initiative and, and the tax that we collect. And, and this voice is, is really important to me because he provides services through Centro Savila. He's in the North Valley where he lives, but he provides services in the South Valley as well as in the International District. And it's a treatment program devoted to recovery and healing of individuals, families, and communities. This is a really important mission, I feel. And, and his statement, I have asked that the letter be sent to all of you so you can take a look at it before we take our final vote in, in a couple of weeks. But he really is asking us to make prevention a cornerstone of our strategy because it is the most humane way to deal with this addiction problem, the opioid addiction, the problem that we talked about, nine and 11-year-olds. I mean, my goodness, who, who would think that that would be a problem in our community? But it is. So we really want to also consider that prevention component and this plan does that. That is very, very important to me, to work with our providers, with our schools. So his, I'll just end with his statement that this is a moment of tremendous responsibility and potential. The choices we make today with this funding will shape the health and well-being of our county for decades. Let's seize the opportunity to create a legacy of prevention, equity and community wellness. So with that statement, I want to also reach out to our colleagues at the city. I watched that, uh, council meeting till eleven-thirty. God bless them. We hopefully, we'll, we'll get out of there be, before that tonight, but, um, and I really want to thank our, our, our counselors, our counterparts at, at City Hall. And, um, thank the mayor, hope that he will, um, make this happen, sign this into law. And, um, we cannot overstate the importance of collaboration here as a community, as our government agencies, but as a community, because they're our children in our future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baca. Uh, Madam Vice Chair, did you want to close?
Yes, thank you so much. I, um, am just again grateful for all the work that's gone on. Collaboration, collaboration, collaboration. Let's work together and make a dent for our families and communities. And that's it. Thank you, Vice, thank you, Chair, for all the work.
And I wanted to say, I think one, one group, one person got left out, and that's, uh, he's standing right there at the podium. Uh, critical to this effort, um, especially in the subcommittee. Um, Dr. Lindstrom and, and the team behind him, uh, showed up with the data, with, with the facts. Um, you know, really supported us, supported our work and helped us get where we're at. We would not be here without Dr. Lindstrom, um, and his companion, uh, companions at the City of Albuquerque. Uh, really did take a huge team and a lot of effort, but Dr. Lindstrom was absolutely there every step of the way to support us. I really appreciate you and all your work on this. So, thank you. All right, with that, we'll close the floor and, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say thank you so much, but in the spirit of that, I feel a need to recognize Stanford Kemp, who we lost at one of those committee meetings, who had recently been hired as the Director of Behavioral Health, uh, for the city. And, um, you know, he was part of this effort too, and unfortunately we lost him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate you recognizing him and his efforts. All right, with that, uh, we will close the floor and, okay, just making sure. Uh, all those in favor, uh, please signal an affirmative. Aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes on a five-zero vote. Item B, Fire and Rescue, uh, fiscal year twenty-five Emergency Medical Services Transport Billing Revenues. And we have Deputy County Manager Greg Perez to present.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Greg Pettis, Deputy County Manager and Acting Fire Chief, uh, for Burnley County. That does sound weird to say, but here we are. Before you tonight is an introduction of a financial resolution for our transport billings for FY twenty-five. So Burnley County received our transport license, uh, back in twenty-twenty-three. And we've been charging for, uh, any time that we have to transport in the event that Albuquerque ambulance is at a level zero, we now bill for that transport. And what you're seeing before you is an injection back into the, the fire fund, um, for the transports for FY twenty-five. So I stand for any questions on that particular item.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? I do have, uh, have one. I guess I was just trying to understand. So in this, uh, proposal, it mentions the contractor that, that we're contracted with. And, and they are part of the budget of this, correct? Some of this money is being budgeted to them. And then the rest of the funds are being budgeted back into the, um, emergency communications. It's not the right word. Um, can you just expand on that a little bit more and explain what that's going to or what holes that, those are filling?
Absolutely, uh, Chair Commissioners. So we entered into an agreement with Image Trend, who is the keeper of our, our emergency reports. And they now go out and do the billing on behalf of Burnley County so that we didn't have to set up our own billing department internal. So at the end of each fiscal year, they bill us for their amount. And I believe, and don't quote me, but I believe it's about five percent on each amount that they collect. Um, and in addition to that, because we utilize the computer-aided dispatch system, a portion of the proceeds that come back in as part of the transport revert back to the nine-one-one system as a, kind of a sharing from Fire and Rescue, uh, to our partners at nine-one-one. So that's what you're reading inside that, that item.
Okay, that, that makes a lot of sense. And I guess I just want to make sure that, that as we budget this and County Manager and I and a lot of, a lot of our DCMs and team have, have been talking about this, just the importance of making sure that we use, we budget those revenues in a way where they support the ongoing maintenance and operation. So, you know, that, uh, we're buying new fire, new ambulances, which we're, you know, expending some of their life on these calls to, you know, the wear and tear, the tires, the engines, all that. Um, and so is that, is, are we able to do that?
Chair Commissioners, so the County Manager did establish this, uh, an item for this money to generate or to go directly back into, uh, Fire and Rescue. So we do exactly what you're speaking to with these monies. Actually, we do it more on the medical side. So we purchase rescue units with it, but more importantly, medical supplies, um, which will keeps, keeps the overall cost of the gen, uh, towards the general fund, um, away. So this is one of those areas where Fire and Rescue is able to offset the expense that would hit the general fund if we didn't have these types of monies, um, at our dispense, our, at our possession.
Perfect. Answered, answered beautifully. Really appreciate that. Uh, Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second, uh, motion by Commissioner Barbara Baca, second by the Chair. And, uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signal the affirmative.
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none opposed, that passes on a five-zero. And, uh, Chief, you'll stay with us, or Acting Chief, but yeah, that's hard to deal with that right now. Um, to talk to us about wildland reimbursement.
Chair Olivas, Commissioners, again, Greg Pettis, Acting Fire Chief, Deputy County Manager for Public Safety. So before you is an introduction of financial resolution, increasing Fire and Rescue's budget in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, eleven dollars and ninety-five cents. And to approve a transfer to the fire fund in the amount of eight hun, eight thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents for reimbursement of meals and lodging and incidentals. The monies that we are bringing before you are what were generated as part of our, uh, RMP response for wildland fires outside of Burnley County. So an example would be to, uh, California, um, Las Vegas, other areas that we had responded to, um, over the course of twenty-twenty-three. It takes time for those monies to actually come back into our, our coffers, and they're finally here. So this is our opportunity to bring those monies back into the general fund. And different than the monies I just spoke about with the, the emergency transports, these monies actually go back into the general fund to offset the, uh, cost of overtime and staffing for our wildland fire, um, responses. The only piece that we do ask for is that small, uh, eight thousand of the three-hundred-thousand dollars to offset what we use from the fire funds for the, the actual trip itself in, in way of meals or any other incidentals, a tent. If a tent blew away, we can replace a tent, small things like that. And that's the item that you have before you.
All right, thank you very much, Chief. Any questions, Commissioners? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
No approval.
Second, a motion by, uh, Commissioner Barbara Baca, second by the Chair. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, signal the affirmative.
Aye.
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 None opposed, passes on a five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now, operations and maintenance, uh, budget increase utilizing fund balance appropriation for the road fund, from the road fund, and Director Harameo to present.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, thank you for, uh, for, uh, hearing this one today. Uh, this is a budget increase utilizing fund balance appropriation in the road fund. The road fund, uh, as you can see, uh, in, in the presentation, um, is a number of roadways that, uh, we plan to, um, do some ma, uh, maintenance on. Um, yeah, the road fund is comprised of our operating funds, um, and also the, um, the, what we're requesting today is four-point-five million of that, which is revenues also generated by our, um, franchise fees. What we call franchise fees, basically utility companies come in uh, and, uh, they, they pay us a, a, a certain amount of, of, of fund, of revenue to be within our roadway. Uh, so utilizing those funds to do some of our operations and maintenance. So we had, we do have some, um, certain strategies, um, that we can, you know, hit a lot of roadways within the county. Um, and we have, we have hit almost every single district other than District Three. We don't have very many roads in that, in that district. Um, but we do have, uh, uh, we, we strategically looked at different, um, opportunities, basically to stretch those dollars. Uh, so Amor and her crew, um, are going to be able to do that. She has come up with a really good, um, system in that. So, um, all of them are, are displayed in there. The one I wanted also to, um, kind of highlight is here at the, the lift pump stations or, um, the lift stations. Uh, currently, um, we have two, three pumps that are, that are out, um, that are in dire need of replacement. Um, we are rehabilitating a one, but, um, all of those pumps are currently out. So, um, the sooner we can get those things replaced, the better. Um, so the two pumps at Sanchez Farms and the one at Clay Vista are currently out. So, um, the sooner we can get tho, those funds available to us, we can replace those as, um, as soon as possible. I stand for any questions.
All right, thank you, Director. Commissioners, Commissioner Frank Baca first?
Um, it's a couple of que, just to make sure I'm saying, so is all of this money coming from the, uh, franchise fee, the right-of-way fund that you're mentioning that, uh, spent, uh, paid to us by the utility companies?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Frank Baca, yes. Uh, all those funds are, are the revenues that we received from, um, the, um, franchise fees.
And, you know, and we, and, you know, you and I have talked about this several times before in terms of just the prioritization of roads. And I see plenty of, you know, of roads in, in District Two, which, you know, we greatly appreciate. And, and I, you know, and I do think about, and we talked about just how those priorities are established. And, and you've shared documents with me. And I just, you know, would like to, hope we continue to not just share with, you know, with myself or the, uh, Commission, but, but the public in terms of, you know, how, you know, what is the, you know, what is the order of priority? And, and I know, and from, from our conversation, I know there's a lot of factors involved. Um, and sometimes there's additional funding that comes in to play from the legislature and such. But anyway, just in, to the extent that we can, we can have a public, um, disclosure of those priorities, I think just to me is helpful and, uh, I appreciate that. But, um, and then just last question about those pumps. And I know what Sanchez Farms is, it's like two blocks away where we, I grew up basically, but are those for flood control or what are, what are those pumps exactly?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Commissioner Frank Baca, yes. So basically what happens is, um, the floodwaters, since there's really nowhere for some of those of floodwaters to, to go. Uh, we have various ponds and what we call lift stations. So they basically lift that water out of that pond into, um, adjacent ponds or waterways. Um, we have to treat that, uh, before we can lift it out of there. Um, Madam, uh, Madam County Manager got to see one when we did our, um, our, our tour. And, uh, I welcome any of you guys, um, if you want to take a look at those. And it's a, it's a pretty interesting, um, thing that we do maintain. Again, our, our, those lift stations will lift that water out, um, and then, and send it on its way, eventually getting into the river. And then, uh, to your point, um, the, um, the transparency of how we, we, um, look at prioritizing roadways. Uh, we are investing in, in a, in a new program. Uh, we're, we're working on, um, an asset management plan. Basically, we're looking at, um, database-driven information. Uh, we're going to scan all of our roadways and based off of the analysis that we receive from that, um, we're going to prioritize roads, um, based, worse first is what we're, we're planning on. Obviously, budget is going to be an issue. We have a major roadway that needs major rehab. Of course, we're going to have to build up to that. Um, but it's all our intent to, uh, provide that, um, that portal to everybody, uh, so that they can, um, see our priorities.
Other Commissioners? I want to really, I'm, I'm really excited about this item. I, I love this. Uh, spending some of our, of our fund balance, some of our reserves, putting it to work for the public on what is for my office, anyway, probably the number one concern we get, especially in the East Mountains. That's almost all we hear about is roads, roads, roads. And, um, there's never enough money. This isn't going to do everything. Um, but this is a major investment. I mean, this is, this is tackling, and in the East Mountains specifically, Frost Road on the North Mountain and Moriarty Road on the South Mountain. Those are two really important priorities that, that, you know, I know we've talked about and, um, appreciate the asset management program too. I was talking to Deputy County Manager Archuleta earlier today, learning a little more about that. So I think this is really thoughtful. This is great. I think we should be really excited about this because this is a basic function of government that we are, uh, addressing. And my one question to you on this though is, um, I guess, how frequently do you project we can make these kind of outlets? So this is coming from fund balance. And so I'm just kind of wondering, you know, do you project that this would be replenished next year? Will we be seeing these regularly? Or is this the kind of thing that's going to be, you know, one and done?
Uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, um, what we're, we are seeing, um, and we've, we've, we've learned, learned this probably over the past couple of years. We're expecting about the same amount every year, uh, to be available, and we're going to program that. Uh, so, um, you'll be seeing this on an annual basis. That's our intent. As long as the utility, uh, um, owners keep on paying, we'll, we'll keep on, um, on doing that. Uh, and if we do get additional funding, we'll program that as well.
Great, that's, that's what I wanted to hear. And, uh, while we're on that subject, just this, this last weekend, I was catching up on all my internal audit reports. And, uh, the right-of-way use fees was, was one of those issues. And so, um, you know, I'll follow up with you offline on that, but, but that's an important area to make sure that we're collecting those fees because they go right back into, in this case, right back into our roads. So, um, I hope that we'll, we'll continue to improve that and, and, uh, address those, those recommendations, but which, which I know you are, confident that you are. But, yeah, with that, uh, I would make a motion for approval. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Frank Baca. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Deputy County Manager Archuleta.
Oh, uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, we're getting used to the, the, uh, technology here. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, just to you, to your, uh, question about whether that's a sustainable revenue, uh, we're actually hoping that'll go up. Um, we've been working really closely with the real estate section under, uh, the General Services as they work with new telecom companies that are coming in. And we, you know, currently are talking to at least three of them. Um, so as we come in, we're able to add to the balance that we're collecting. This four and a half million is where we've kind of leveled off out over the, uh, about the last three or four years of collecting them into this, uh, into the, the program. Cause some of them, we had to kind of get on, get them to pay regularly, uh, payback pay. So some of that fund balance you saw was us, uh, and us being, um, the O and M team as well as the real estate team and legal. Uh, cause we need our lawyers to help us with all of this stuff. But we're, we're really starting to see a large influx of new telecom companies coming in, and with that, we expect that to grow.
Great, appreciate that update. Yes, Commissioner Benson?
Deputy County Manager Archuleta, uh, just to clarify, the, the whole purpose, and this may go to, um, Director, uh, Harameo as well. But the purpose of this fund is to be spent, correct? It's not a reserve. This, the intent of this was to be spent, correct?
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Benson, that is correct. Uh, so as, and this is as Director Harameo mentioned, as these funds come in, we will, we intend to do this at least annually. Uh, but as we're getting those reserves coming up, as they come in, we need to budget them into the road fund, and that's what this exercise is.
Thank you. Okay, so my follow-up question, this is just for education for us as a board. Because the, the balance sheet, um, can be confusing when you're just looking at balances. So this money we're voting to approve spending. But while we're spending it, it won't all get spent at once. So the balance won't instantly go away. Meanwhile, new funds will be coming in more so. So by next year, this balance could actually be bigger. And if you're just looking at balances, you could, you might think, well, that money wasn't spent. In fact, it actually grew. But in fact, it was being spent. And that would be reflected in the, the income statement that we see. Um, but it won't be reflected necessarily in the balance sheet because the, by, by the end of next year, that balance might be even higher and look like it's a, an unused reserve. Am I understanding that correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Benson, you're correct. This is- This is cash flow as we see this in anything. So the balance actually goes down as the receipts are paid. We'll be issuing contracts for a lot of this work as it goes out. So we are actually obligating the funds at that point. We are specifically putting them on those contracts. But as we actually pay either for the materials, if we're using our own forces, or paying the contractor that's putting them down, as those progress payments go out over the years, that's when the balance actually draws down. And there's a number, a number of our utilities pay either quarterly or semi-annually. So as the Commissioner has mentioned, some of those incomes are coming in as we're starting to spend out. So we're going to do our best to, you know, flood this out, to use our public works terms, and flood this onto the roads. So we'd have new pavement rather than water.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks for raising that point, Commissioner. All right, I think we were just about to take a vote. So we'll go back to that. Seeing no further debate, all those in favor signaling affirmative. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think he, I think.
I'm sorry, just laid in, I agree.
All right, that passes on a five zero. And then we have one more voting item tonight. We have the City of Albuquerque Brillante Early Learning Center. And we have Denise Benavides to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I am Denise Benavides. I'm the Principal Financial Analyst for the Finance Division. The item before you is sponsored by Commissioner Barbara Baca, and it will be located in District One. This item presents the approval to authorize the County Manager to approve the agreement between Burnaleo County and the City of Albuquerque to provide a capital contribution for the design and construction of the CABQ Brillante Early Learning Center, as well as authorize the County Manager to execute any subsequent amendments related to and resulting from this request. This initiative supports the county's strategic goals of community health, which provides access to cultural amenities and supports the vision of the county to provide the best quality of life to current and future generations. An overview, the Brillante Early Learning Center is a museum-based science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics education center, otherwise known as STEAM. It'll house a new facility and serve over 150 infants, toddlers, and young children and their families with the full-time care, preschool, community learning, and resources serving the city and the county with their respective residents. If you recall, the voters approved in the 2022 general bond election, $525,000. That was approved by this commission on June 11th of 2024, and that was the first capital contribution. The agreement was executed with the city, and the city is in receipt of those first set of funds. On November 5th of 2024, voters again approved an additional 500, bless you, $525,000 from the 2024 voter authorized general obligations bonds. And this represents that $525,000, which was sold as part of the GEO Series 2025, making the funding available. The County Manager will be authorized to approve the agreement. This is an overview of that intergovernmental agreement, which includes the city or its contractor shall undertake and shall be responsible for all the aspects of the project. The Shitty Cell spends a county contribution exclusively on design and construction associated with the project, which can constitute capital costs and are consistent with the terms of the election and the bond resolution. So since these are bond funds, they cannot be used for any kind of operation, administrative, or maintenance purposes. The city shall pay remaining costs associated with the design and the construction of the project, and they shall arrange for the performance of all work related to the completion of the project. One thing to note is promptly following the expenditure of this county contribution, but no later than 90 days following the project's completion, the city shall provide the county with the final breakdown of how the funding was expended in a project closeout memorandum provided to the county's Community Services Deputy County Manager. I also want to note that the groundbreaking was held on November 2024, and it is anticipated that this facility will open in the fall of 2026. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Barbara Baca. You're the sponsor of this. Do you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Denise. That was great. I mean, you said it all. But I think that one thing that we need to tell the public and my colleagues here, this is the building right adjacent to Explora. It is a group of beautiful, very important to our education and history and art and science and learning. And so this epitomizes what that, you know, stands for as a community that we invest together with our partners at the city for the youth of our community. It serves, right now, as I understand it, students at CNM who work at Explora and their children. So it's all one big family of activities. But the important thing is that it's a learning center, just as Explora is. So it's an extension of that. So I'm just very excited about this partnership and this beautiful building. So I urge your support. Move approval.
A second? Any other comments? No? Okay. And if I could clarify, this is, between the two, it's a little over a million dollars that we will be contributing to this project?
Mr. Chair, yes, that is correct.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signaling affirmative. Aye?
Aye.
Passes on a five zero. Thank you. All right, last item this evening, discussion. We have the Compliance Office presenting the Code of Conduct Review Board and Compliance Office Biannual Report. Mr. Rocky Gutierrez to present.
Good evening, Chair Levis, Madam Chair Bobowa, Commissioners. I am pleased to present tonight's Compliance Office Code of Conduct, fiscal year 25, Quarterly One and Two Biannual Report. Rocky Gutierrez, Chief Compliance Officer. First, I'd like to thank our staff for their wonderful work that they do all year. Also, a special thank you to Ms. Ruiro Martinez, who will be moving on to another position, and we are currently filling her position. So as you're aware, the Burnaleo County Code of Conduct ordinance is located at County Code, Chapter Two, Article Three, Division Four, under the authority of the NMSA 1978. Some of their primary responsibilities are receiving and accepting sworn complaints. We also report to the Review Board and this commission. I'd like to also thank our board members for their continued work in making very important decisions. And they are also in the process of accepting and reviewing amendments to the code. They have been doing that for a little while, and they're continuing to do that. So thank you to the board. I think the important matter on this particular slide are the term dates, which I will briefly go through. District One, I'd like to thank Eric Jeffries and Paul Chavis, their term. According to, well, they expire on April 24, 2025, but can be subject to reappointment and continue appointment until that is completed. Also, District Two, thank you to Chuck McCoon and Angel Garcia. Chuck McCoon's appointment is continued until 2027. And Mr. Garcia's appointment will term in April 24, 2025, but he can also continue until he is reappointed or replaced. And thank you to Ms. Martha Brown, whose term will continue until 2027. And thank you to Ms. Jenny Lusk, who resigned her position on January 25th. And her position is currently vacant and will be filled. Also, thank you to Mr. Robert Doucet and Sean Cassini, who was scheduled to be reappointed tonight. And thank you to Ralph Ronz and Kai Tecumseh, who, Mr. Ron's appointment will also term on April 24, 2025, and can continue until his appointment is stated by this board or approved by this board. And Mr. Tecumseh is also, his appointment is termed in September of 2025. So there's time for Mr. Tecumseh. Very quickly, there are some formal matters currently in place. But for the sake of this report, I will stick to Quarter One and Quarter Two of FY '25. Code of Conduct complaints, we received no complaints in either quarter. We'd received one advisory request in Quarter One, two informal opinion requests in Quarter Two, and three informal guidance resolution requests in Quarter Three. We received 19 non-code of conduct complaints in Quarter One. We actually received seven in Quarter Two, but one was carried over. Six were closed. No code of conduct complaints were sent to the, excuse me, zero code of conduct complaints were filed that did not have to be sent to the board. And we had two housing appeals in Quarter One and four housing appeals in Quarter Two. We also had, and this is only for new employee orientation trainings in Quarter One, six, and in Quarter Two, eight. At this time, I would like to thank Chair Levis and Commissioner Benson for your help and participation in a training video that we have put together. We will be, we will start the biannual trainings, hopefully in August of this year. And we'll be using that particular video in those trainings. So thank you for your participation and help in that. Stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gutierrez, Vice Chair Barbara.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Can you go back to the previous slide to this?
Yes, ma'am.
I was unaware. Thank you for this chart. I like to see things like this. Housing appeals, what are those?
So if housing proposes termination of a voucher, the participant has the option to appeal. This office, I am appointed the hearing officer for those particular hearings. So we conduct an informal hearing for the participant to present any evidence contrary or in their defense of why the voucher should not be terminated. And we conduct informal hearings for that process.
And does the same Code of Conduct Board review those housing appeals as well?
No, ma'am. That is an additional responsibility of myself in this office. But the Review Board does not have jurisdiction of those hearings.
So who does review those housing?
So once I draft a decision, order and decision, they go to the parties, and if the parties are not in agreement, they have the option to appeal to District Court.
So you alone review the appeal and make a decision?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you. And then for the non-code of conduct complaints, those are mostly about between staff or who? And what would you say the high number of in Quarter One was about?
Yeah, it's unusual. It fluctuates between quarters. And a lot of these complaints come from constituents. There are various complaints because our office is obligated to receive any complaint from staff, from the constituents. And if you go onto the county website, or even if you Google where to file complaints, our office information comes up. So we get complaints about weeds, traffic, I mean, all sorts of complaints. So based on those complaints, then we submit them to the appropriate department for them to handle that, and we follow up with them and try to resolve them within the time and manner.
Great. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioner Benson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Gutierrez, on that same slide, did you say the trainings were for new hire, new employee trainings?
Yes, on a biannual, yes, sir.
So those, that's the second highest category of reports filed. Those are all from new employees going through? Are those like training courses? Or is that like a training period that they are under review for? Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Benson, on a biweekly basis, the county conducts new employee orientation. Various departments come in and conduct certain trainings. We've condensed it to an hour. And our training during this time only encompasses anti-harassment and workplace violence policy training. We have preserved the Code of Conduct training for our biannual reports. We're also in the process of creating a virtual training so that new employees coming in, they have immediate training, our two-hour, excuse me, yes, two-hour biannual training. Once they come in, they don't have to wait for the next in-person trainings. So we're in the process of creating that. So the new employee orientation training is limited currently to those two policies.
Okay, and so are these new hires that are filing complaints about that training?
No, sir. This report is simply about this office and its task of performing trainings for those particular events.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's, that helps. So these aren't complaints filed about the training?
Oh, no.
Yeah, exactly. It's the video they don't like, yes.
That would have been in non-code of conduct complaints if there were, but there are not.
All right, anyone else? Thank you very much, Mr. Gutierrez. Appreciate all your work and all the work of our Code of Conduct Board.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. And with that announcement of our next commission meeting, we have on April 10th, I'm sorry, it was confusing me here for a minute. On this Thursday, April 10th, we'll have a special administrative meeting for our budget hearings at 9:00 a.m. Look forward to seeing everyone there. Really excited for those hearings and the different format. And then on Tuesday, April 22nd, we have our regular administrative meeting at 5:00 p.m. right here in the Kansas Sanchez Chambers. And if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned.